Welcome, everybody, to the 3054 regularly scheduled business meeting for the City of Harriman. We'll start our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright and we'll follow that by pledging to the flag, Councilman Wright.
Yeah, tonight is, as we bow our heads, could we pause a moment in memory of J.D. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for the privilege we have to return for another meeting and we ask your blessings upon all that are intended here. And Father, we ask a special blessing on the family and friends of J.D. Sampson. May he be near their hearts and may they find solace and comfort in you during these trying times. And may we, tonight, in all our actions and deeds, do things that are pleasing to you and your spirit and your guidance. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayler?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Betty Holly?
Here.
King Mina?
Here.
Lonnie Wright?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 2nd council meeting? Motion by Councilman Best. Second, second by Councilman Ayler. Councilman Best, that's what, Councilman Ayler. The floor is open for questions or discussion. Call and roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Now, here, motion to approve the bills from the previous month. Motion by Councilman Minna, a second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Minna?
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for questions or discussion about the bills, invoices, payment of those from the previous month. Call and roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
This time, we hear delegations from the audience if anyone would like to address. Counsel, you may do so at this time. If you would stand, state your name and try to limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak.
Phil Alexander. We lost three good citizens of Harriman this weekend, Lady Coran, the bakery, J.D. Williams, our Army hero, and J.D. Sampson. And with J.D., whether you agreed with him or didn't agree with him, when you talked to him, you always knew one thing, J.D. had the earnest of Harriman at his heart the whole time, and especially the kids for the recreation stuff.
Anybody else? Move on to old business. Councilman Holly, any old business? Councilman Best, old business. Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Minna?
No, sir.
Councilman Wright?
It's not old business. I echo what Bill said, J.D. was a member of this body for a couple of terms. He was a very colorful and enjoyable character. And I agree with Bill, if there's anybody that ever really loved this town and loved kids, he and his wife Patty are those people. And we already miss him, as Drack says, he was such a good person as far as the rec program were concerned, but he's already been missed.
I think I've been going to the ballfields and all for about 35 years and I was thinking the other day, I don't never remember going down there and not seeing, you know, both, at least both of them, at least one of them, I mean. Going on to department reports, Fire Department Chief.
The only thing I got, Mayor, due to J.D., first of all, you know, we send a prayer to the family and on Thursday, I got with Kingston, we're going to hang the flag, they've been hanging from the ladder trucks on Morgan Street in honor of him, since he was the city councilman, and he cares so much about the City of Harriman.
You think that?
No, sir.
Police Department Chief.
Yes, sir. In reference to J.D., we'll be providing funeral escort for the police crew. I remember, we were at the ballgame with J.D., he'd always tell me stories about when he was a young man running up and down Harriman here as a kid with the trouble he'd get into with his BB gun. I don't know if any of you have heard that story. The other thing we got is March the 7th through the 13th is the date that we set for our vehicle auction. We've already started working on those vehicles. They're in the impound lot now, some of them have been stripped down. We're going to request that some prisoners come in to help clean them up and get those ready and then look at any other surplus items as well.
The 7th through what?
Yeah, March the 7th through 13th.
Govdeals?
Yes, sir. Govdeals.com.
Dr. Kirby?
Just one thing, I passed around the financial report for last year. Read it as you will and we'll have a test on it next week.
It's pretty interesting, no? It is. Good, good report. Thank you. Allison?
Yes.
Kevin, you gave a good report last week. You got anything else this week? Anything new?
Just a couple of minor notes. As you've probably noticed, the audit has been taken down off this building in preparation for the new oning to be installed. The street department did that and based upon what we were quoted, to have attempted to remove that as well as the salvage value that we received, that saved the city a little over $760 by having the street department do that. Also, we've pursued a couple of different options with regard to painting the building as well as repairing some of the areas along the side and back of the building that are breaking away. We've got a quote in hand to do that and we're also talking with one of the prison crews to see if it might be possible to arrange for them to do that to obtain some cost savings as well. And that should be occurring in the near future. Also, I think last week, it was brought up about an area along Rome Street near the post office that was, the road was breaking away. We have started looking into that and it appears to be a shoulder washout. Initially, we was unsure of the cause. Recently, received some information that indicates that there was a HUB repair of a utility line in that area somewhere in the neighborhood of Florida six months ago and that that area might not have been completely stabilized with the amount of rains that we've had, that that was part of what the washout was, that area that we've been repairing. Not been able to confirm that with HUB as of yet, but we think we'll be able to ditch that before the end of the week.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd be glad to take a question. It's not a good.
Could I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to, and I mentioned it brought up earlier, we had discussed sometime by it without hiring somebody to, when you said inmates, to maybe start doing that, and budget some money in there. What would we add on that process? Somebody that would supervise them and go get the inmates up at the prison.
President, we have some funding available in the budget for various upgrades and so forth, but there's nothing with respect to bringing staff members on to do that beyond the crew leader that would be assigned from the prison with the crews as we've used occasionally in the past. But that is an option that if we could pursue, if we had someone who was available and qualified to do that work, we wouldn't have a full-time, wouldn't have budget funds available for a full-time position that could be done part-time during times of the year where suitable for construction.
I've also been talking with the, more than any regional, we have requested from them for several building projects. One is the farmer's market when the committee gets ready, but the first project would be a different crew and there, hopefully, we'll come down in the next three, four weeks to re-clear the bank at Riverfront Park.
One question about the work on Rowantown or Pine Ridge, whatever you want to call it. Are they going to bring the grade of the south or eastbound lanes up to the grade of the westbound lanes? If they don't, that's going to negate the turning lane.
I think they are. I think that's going to be built up of gravel and all that.
Yeah, I think before the project is finished, that will be broad degree. Now, there was a question raised with regard to one of the intersections in that area as I think the plans had changed during the design phase. At one point, the, I'm not sure what that particular segment of the road is called, but the, from like the entry into the police department up to Ruriken Road, the way it kind of flies off, the area comes closest around by the ballfields. At one point, that was going to be closed off and it would be a cul-de-sac that would access just a few properties that were in that area. I think the most recent version of the plans calls for that intersection to remain so you could have the intersections as they are today. And I'm not sure, all those discussions occurred, I guess, about two years ago.
Still, one of them's going to be, the one by the police department would just be a one-way, though, right?
That's what I'm seeing.
Think so.
Looking at the plan, just sort of.
Come in, I think you can come in that way.
It's going to be a one-way and a no-left turn.
Yeah, they could.
No, you can turn left up the road. I was just wondering about going across four lanes of traffic.
Drack was the one that asked me about it and he was under the impression that it would remain essentially as is today.
That's changed, then. I need to check on what?
And I don't know if the city has a preference. I believe as long as it didn't substantially change the cost of the project, they would be willing to accommodate whatever our request would be for that area. So, it may be something you want to look into and discuss in workshop?
We have the utilities.
How's it go after that? That's not the most reasonable idea.
Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
Yes.
Move on to committee reports. Big none move on to the agenda, discuss and possibly approve sales tax increase ballot referendum. This was a short discussion last week and moved on for this week. Kind of under the gun now for as far as time goes on this. Councilman Best, anything on this?
I'm the one brought it up and we've talked about, talked about it. You know, one thing I'd like to say, if we want to put it out there is to maybe looking at that and attachment to it as to what that money's going to be used for. When people go to vote for a tax increase, they're going to have to see something that we're using that money for instead of just putting it back in the budget. And, you know, I pulled this week, put this costing for the $2 million that we're borrowing to do roads and I think we're looking at about $190,000 a year payback on that. You know, I'd like somewhere that we put it in there that this money will be used for the paving and for the infrastructure that's going on inherently instead of just saying we want to raise the tax just to put money back in the budget. So, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and put the referendum out there, but as a council, that that money will be used for infrastructure work.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Best and a second by Councilman Ayler. Goes back to you again, Councilman Best. Councilman Ayler?
I just think it's been an incredible number of years since we've had a tax increase. I think the city needs to be proud of that, one. Since I've been on council, I know that we've asked our department heads time and time again to cut budgets and to be as tight as they possibly can fiscally, and I think it's time for the people of Harriman to decide whether or not they want to empower this city government body to be able to make the necessary improvements in our infrastructure that we need to.
Floor is open for question or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, council may want to consider amending the motion to include adoption of ordinance 216-01, which is in your pocket from first reading, which calls for the question that you've indicated. Would note in the first paragraph of that ordinance, it does indicate that the tax levy would be to fund infrastructure improvements prior to second reading, if you would like to make that a little more specific as to which infrastructure improvements we can do.
I would, yeah, I think, I think if we were to draw a resolution to the effect that this, if passed, this point, 2025 percent would go towards paving and infrastructure in general, I wouldn't want to just tie it to this because then Sunset Bowl would have to have, or something would happen to it. You know, it would also give the impression, if we did that, I would be afraid that we didn't, weren't able to pay for this if it failed. We're able to pay for this note, but we've got a tremendous amount of stormwater projects that we have to take on as well as more paving, so I would hesitate to do that. I'd rather pass a resolution that said just in general, this money would go for in general in capital improvements or, I mean, sorry, infrastructure.
And that's essentially wasn't what it says now, infrastructure improvements.
Okay.
And we wanted to carry on, don't we? We wouldn't want it just to pay off this current paving and stuff. We want it to be dedicated.
That tax increase should always be for the infrastructure work, not for raises or hiring employees. I think it needs to go for the infrastructure of Harriman.
And so, is that what you're saying, Kevin, that we've got in this?
Yes, sir. But that's how I read the present, is for infrastructure.
And is that your motion, Wayne?
I just seen this ordinance, City of this system's increased sales tax levy to fund infrastructure improvements within the city.
This is specific to a note, though. Right.
Now, this is, it's a different one that's in your pocket. It wasn't in your.
Oh, you're in the ordinance. Oh, okay.
Essentially, with the exception of the two whereas paragraphs at the beginning of the ordinance, the remainder of it is the model ordinance that M-PAS has to call for a sales tax referendum. The two whereas paragraphs at the beginning is what's specific to Harriman.
Okay, yeah. I thought you were talking about the resolution.
And again, this would be, if passed first reading, and it would still require a second reading before the actual referendum would be called for.
Could you have my motion to, if it's on the ordinance, 0216-01?
Yes. Mr. Kevin, make the second.
Is there, it's just a general statement, going towards infrastructure. Is that what's clarifying? Yes, it's fine.
Floor's still open for questions.
And we would have an opportunity to change.
Prior to your second reading.
Prior to your second reading, if, okay.
Now, what happens? If, will we have time between first and second reading? I mean, will we have time for the second reading in order for the timeline to start for it to get on the referendum if we do the ordinance in the second reading?
Okay.
Motion on the floor is in to adopt ordinance 0216-01 on first reading. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Is there any more discussion? When will second reading be? Is this, is this a 10-day or a 15-day or we do the first meeting in March? Will the first meeting in March, Kevin say?
It will.
Because we have to allow the county then to take it up, right? And they have to.
They do. There's after, maybe send it to the county and then.
So, there's what's going to affect after.
Yes. I believe as long as we pass it and submit it to the election commission prior to March 31st, then we're okay to get it on the ballot for the application.
But they won't necessarily take it up until, when will, when will, will we know when it would go into effect? The increase?
They, it's in here, if it were approved at the referendum, it goes into effect on the first day of the month, it occurs at least 30 days following the election.
October, October 12th. Okay. Motion is to adopt the ordinance 0216-01 for a sales tax increase, put it on the referendum, there'd be two readings. This is first reading. Is there any more discussion? Call and roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Next item is discuss and possibly take action on recommendations from the Recreation Board. Sam, you have an update or a request for that?
We'd like to all review what we have here and possibly approve. It might be a better idea to do it in workshop. I don't know. Okay, workshop.
I agree with you. It's a, it's a, it's a good thorough report, Sam, but I believe the workshop where we could try to then find funding and things of that sort, because we'll take up quite a bit of time in this meeting if we don't. I mean, that's, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that you might want to consider this evening, I've been approached by various members of the Recreation Committee as well as the community, asking that the city consider allowing them to host a basketball tournament at the community center that would take place after our Recreation League season ends. We do not presently, as far as I know, have a policy in place for a third party to utilize a city facility. If we want to do that, that matter would need to be taken up as quickly as possible to allow them to prepare for that event. I think Sam is aware of what their plans are and has questions as to how that will be structured, but essentially, as I understand it, they would like to utilize the community center for a few days. There would be no cost to the city and actually may generate some revenue that will go into the rec department as a result of that activity. Do you have that up for your consideration?
What about the other gems that would be used? Would we need, would you all get permission for that?
We've already got permission from the high school and middle school.
Okay. What would you need us to do just to approve the use of community center?
Yes, March 25th and 26th.
Is there a motion on the floor to set aside the use of the community center for the AAU?
The Rome County Rage AAU.
The Rome County Rage basketball tournament on March 25th and 26th? Is this? Motion by Councilman Ayler, a second. Second by Councilman Best, Councilman Ayler.
Do we need to do as far as city's concerned to help facilitate this? Does this need to be coordinated with Kevin or maybe does something need to be coordinated with Rebecca?
We're advertising it and all we really need is the doors unlocked.
That's it?
Yeah, no problem.
Well, this will be a, is this a city event? It's not a city event. Is it a city event? No.
It's just using our syllable.
What about liability insurance? We have, we cover that?
I would anticipate we'll, we'll work on that. We'll, we have a facility use agreement that we would need them to sign as well to provide us with copy of our liability insurance, similar to somebody we're using in the hospital.
Okay. Floor's still open for discussion on the basketball tournament.
We're, the way I understand it, the city will get the gate and the concession stand, is that clear? And the basketball team will get the entry ticket. And you're looking at how many teams? We're looking at 40 to 50 teams.
And who is we?
The Rome County Rage AAU basketball team.
Okay.
The city, I would anticipate the city having city employee on site while the facilities are being used by the third party, but because we will be receiving the gate and concessions, that should more than cover our costs of having that employee inside.
Floor's still open. Discussion, questions. March 25th, 26th, allowing the Rome County Rage to use the community center. There's no more discussion. Call and roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
We'll take this up at the, in our next workshop. It looks like good work and it looks like some of this stuff can be done for minimal cost.
Thank you.
And prisoner labor maybe too, so, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discuss and possibly take action on requesting HUB to add a security light on Rome Street near the entrance to Emery Gap, Dry Valley Road, is that right?
Old Valley.
Old Valley Road. The entrance there to Emery Gap, Old Valley Road, and there's a church when you come on back towards Harriman. There's a yellow building beside it. Ellis used to have their auctions there, son. It's a yellow building. The people that own or occupy in that building are asking for a street light there. Apparently, very dark at night, right there. They're asking for one to be put up on the city's right away.
Is that down, is that down where the dentist?
Other side of the road.
On the other, on, back on the wheels, yeah.
This side of wheels, back this side of wheels.
Yeah, and put a big red star there, because I miss that road going home about half time. It's dark, you can't tell. Good deal. I know that we make that request.
Motion by Councilman Wright to make the request to add the security light there on Rome Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minna. Councilman Wright?
I agree, it's, I mean, it's, it's dark.
Councilman Minna?
I agree, that's a dark area, it needs to be lit up, but I also would like to compliment HUB for the security light they put up out here. There's one over here in the corner that needs to be repaired. Any chance of getting that done?
Councilman Holly, we said earlier, discussing that earlier, he's going to, I discussed that with Keith Lewis prior to this one being put in, what we're going to say, what this would look like before we move further after seeing it. I think we do need to do some additional and Councilman Holly is going to bring it up to HUB tomorrow.
I think it's a fluorescent, you, you need to put it up.
The people that own or occupy in that building are asking for a street light there. Apparently, very dark at night right there. They're asking for one to be put up on the city's right of way.
Is that down... Is that down where the dentist's...
Other side of the road.
On the other... Back on the wheels.
Yeah. This side of wheels, back this side of wheels.
Yeah. Put a big red star there because I miss that road going home about half a time. It's a dark area. You can't tell. Good deal. I know that we make that request.
Motion by Councilman Wright to make the request to add the security light there on Rome Street. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Minna. Councilman Wright.
I agree. I mean, it's dark.
Councilman Minna.
I agree. That's a dark area. It needs to be lit up. But I also would like to compliment HUB for the security light they put up out here. There's one over here in the corner that needs to be repaired. Any chance of getting that done?
Councilman Holly, we're discussing that earlier. He's going to... I discussed that with Keith Lewis prior to this one being put in, what we're going to say what this will look like before we move further after seeing it. I think we do need to do some additional. Councilman Holly is going to bring it up at HUB in March.
It's a fluorescent. You need to put it in white English. Probably need to operate it even more. I knew it looked a bit dark.
That corner's still kind of dark.
Yeah. I came by one night and that light was working and I thought, well, this is going to be okay. And then I come by at night or two later and it wasn't working. It was pretty black.
Floor's still open for questions or discussion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Next item is discuss and possibly approve paving bid. Kevin.
We opened bids yesterday for the paving project. We received two bids. One bidder chose to bid asphalt for pickup at the plant only. Another bidder, Roger Crude, chose to bid those items as well as the in-place work that we had requested. The prices are a good bit lower than the estimates that we had previously. The bids were bid with the standard clause that T-Duck uses for adjustments based upon fuel prices. So the rates could go up or down based upon that index. Otherwise, everything else within the bids would be fixed. The bids would be good at least through December 31st of 2016. And we would have an option to renew them through December 31st of 2017 if we chose to do so.
Motion to accept that low bid. Motion by Councilman Hager. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Hager.
Excited to get this started.
Yes. Councilman Holly.
Who did you say had the low bid?
Low bid was Roger Crude.
Okay.
They estimated that if the bid is approved this evening, they could begin paving as early as April 18th. And total timeframe for construction would probably be six to eight weeks. They noted six weeks in the bid. That was based upon the original 1.5 million dollar budget. I would anticipate slightly longer if we decided to increase it to two minutes.
Floor's still open on this motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
I'll say it again. It's tremendous amount of work that was done by Kevin on this. It's a very impressive look at the maps. If you haven't done so, go do so. All of the streets along with the street committee have all been inventoried and scored and graded. A lot of hard work. Thank you. Next item is review and... I'm sorry. Discuss and possibly approve list of streets for paving.
In your package, you've had the list of streets as recommended by the street committee that would be included in this project on the outset. I would point out a couple of things for you. One, the prices that you see there were based upon the rates that we had from back in the summer. So the actual price is based upon these bids, assuming that the fuel index stays low enough until we actually go to paving. Should be lower than what you see here. But I would also note that even with the lower costs, we're going to be real close, but there is a chance that we may not get all of these streets done as part of the project. We really won't know until in some cases we start excavating the streets to see just how much thickness of pavement that we need to put down as well as how much repairs would be needed in certain spots to the sublayers base of the roads as opposed to just doing the overlay. The price estimates that you have were based on standard 2-inch overlay. Anywhere that we can reduce to 2 inches, our money will go a little further. And anywhere where we have to do additional secondary work, it will cut into that budgeted amount. And the maps that are referenced are over here showing all of our streets that fell into the two lowest categories as well as there's a map over here that shows the streets that's included on this list and you can sort of get a perspective of how that lays out throughout the entire city limits.
Motion to approve this list?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright. Second. Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Wright.
No, I, of course, served on it committee and like you, I think Kevin and Drack and the help of, I guess, Roger's group of people that they brought in did a good job in being able to classify the different streets and the need for repair or repaving and so... Of course, I'm in agreement with it.
Councilman Holly. Floor's open.
Kevin, over. The last two streets down on the bottom, the ones you're writing there, are they being included in this that we're approving or is it due to a time later?
I guess that would be if the council initiated some discussions with regards to the structure of agreements that we have in place that helps compensate for expenses such as this. Whether or not the council wants to make that, there's various contention upon FY17 agreement. That could be done.
And the reason I'm asking is if, you know... If it comes back that there's not a new tax that would become conceived, no matter what we do from the housing authority standpoint, I don't feel like it's right that we dislode them because they don't pay the little tax. If the federal government tells them they can't pay it, they can't pay it. There's nothing we can do to offset that. By excluding their properties because of that, I don't feel that that's right.
I would find it hard to believe that the federal government would bill low rates for a little tax payments and everybody else for a little tax payments, including HUB. Seems things that they wouldn't also put the...
It's based off of calculations that the federal government said. The calculation says you can't do it, then you can't do it. We're trying to make it to make it happen, but if it can't be made happen, if we've done all we can and it still can't be made happen, I don't feel like we hold those people accountable for that and therefore exclude them out of getting their roads paid. I know that we look and we've made the argument, they don't pay taxes, they don't... Yeah, they do. They shop here, they buy their cars here, they do things here. And I understand, I mean, I do, but I don't discredit them because of that. Those people may not choose to live there, but they do live there.
Those may be a couple of roads too. I don't know. Extension, patchen, may take care of two if there is no little tax.
Yeah. Maybe it's time to talk to our congressman.
I think they're... I mean, I think they'll...
I've never heard of it.
I think they'll come up. I think they'll be able to...
Fairly funded entity being freed from the route of little tax. Off my own.
Well, I checked. I called KCB City. They've got 19 units in the city in auction, the biggest housing developer in auction. Out of 19 units, they have two that pays a little tax. The rest of them don't. Because the way the federal government's got it set up, the way they do their calculation, it's hard to get it. But we are working on it. I'm just... What I'm saying is it's not the people's fault.
Oh, no, it's not their fault.
Floor's still open. I got ahead of myself earlier. If you hadn't had a chance to look at these streets and map on these streets, get a chance to look at them. Call the roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
No.
Buddy Holly? Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item is review and possibly approve Resolution R. 0216-01, a resolution authorizing issuance of interest-bearing equipment acquisition capital notes, series 2016, in the amount not to exceed $112,000, providing the payment of said notes. Doctor.
Yes, this is the note for the police cars and the fire truck. Total note will be as stated and not to exceed $112,000. The interest rate will be 2.75% per annum. You want me to read the whole resolution?
No, sir. You don't have to.
Okay. There are a lot of clauses in there. There's boilerplate, just outlining your authority, the redemption procedure, the execution, and transfer of notes, regulations, mutilated law, stolen, destroyed notes, authentication, source of payment and security, levy of taxes, approval of director of state and local finance, sale of notes, disposition, on and on with boilerplate. And at the bottom, we have approval and adopted this. Should be ninth day of February 2016. Mayor anticipated by city clerk.
Motion to approve this resolution? Motion by Councilman Best, second. Second by Councilman Hager. Councilman Best, question. Councilman Hager, yes, sir. Floor is open for question or discussion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Last item is review and possibly approve Resolution 0216-02, a resolution providing staff transition to appointed positions following the passage of Tennessee House Bill 2554, advising the Harriman City Charter.
As you recall, when we were developing the revised city charter, it was agreed at that time that we would transition the staff into the appointed positions. We've kind of delayed this for quite a while. We're at a point right now where we need to begin next year's preparation for budget, for the new debt service fund, and for all the revenue forecasting we need to do to get into FY17. So this actually accomplishes that. And it says, whereas Tennessee House Bill 2554 being adopted and signed into law 16th May 2014, advising the Harriman City Charter and change the city's governmental organization and associated staffing procedures, whereas the elected positions of treasurer, city attorney, and city judge became appointed positions as part of the executive branch of city government as outlined in the revised city charter. And whereas to ensure uninterrupted continuity in FY16 to FY17 governmental preparations in financing, accounting, and budgeting, and to maintain continuity and associated operations functions and duties of various offices of the city, certain appointments are needed to conform to city charter provisions. Now therefore be resolved that the elected treasurer and appointed finance officer, Charles Curley, is hereby appointed chief financial officer of the city. He will retain all responsibilities and duties and receive current compensations that are associated with the city's treasurer, finance officer, and budget functions that are confined under the chief finance officer by the revised city charter. He will hold chief financial officer position subject to city charter provisions until such time as a vacancy occurs. That the elected city attorney position vacated due to resignation and currently held by former will be appointed by city council as outlined in the revised city charter. And that the elected city judge, Charles Crass, is hereby appointed city judge subject to city charter provisions until such time as a vacancy occurs. He will retain all responsibilities and compensations that are associated with the elected judge's position. Be further resolved that this resolution take effect immediately on passage, public welfare requiring it done this ninth day of February 2016. Chris Taylor, mayor, test. Chris Daniels.
The will of the council on this resolution, R. 0216-02, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hager and a second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Hager.
Is there any reason why Allison's name was left out under the attorney position? Did it need to be...
It's still appointed if you continue the interim later.
Councilman Holly. Floor's open.
We've just got a couple of questions about... First off, council, have we set a salary for this position? For any of the positions? If they're themselves, we haven't set a salary on either.
It's in the language here.
I was going to say, he just read it out to us.
What it says is you're going to combine all those, so we're going to approve that with the salary.
Same way we do it now, yeah.
He will retain all the responsibilities and duties and receive current compensations that are associated with the city's treasury.
So we're looking at the amount. There is just what it is.
Current compensation.
It's safer. Judge Crass is.
Saving Crass, yes.
We're going to have to look at it. So will the budget director stay with Charles?
Well, the charter says that Kevin and I basically do it the way we did this year, so...
Is this required two readings or...
Two reservations.
As the city manager, is this what you recommended us to go on?
The... With regard to...
With this resolution here, is this... I didn't know that we could... I thought that the position, and this is not against Charles because I think Charles did a wonderful job. I just want you to know that. But I thought that the position, we couldn't appoint anybody in those positions until elected seat came up, which would be August 1st. And I want to make sure that if we do it, that we're doing it legally so somebody can't come back and say, we didn't do it legally. What I understand is he was elected to fill that seat all the way until August 31st. After August 31st, then we appoint that position, is the way I read it in our plan. The reason we got to appoint Allison was because there was a vacancy in that position. The attorney resigned, and so we appointed her just until we look for her. And that's what I want to make sure that we're appointing them and legally we can because right now he's still elected official.
Actually, what you're doing is just changing my title from finance officer to chief finance officer and incorporating all the aspects that are outlined in the charter in the position that I'm already doing the work, so...
I understand that you're right now elected official. We're changing...
Well, we had a four-year election, so we're in limbo and you can appoint this without affecting the elected position.
You're saying the elected position is treasurer?
Yeah. But you've already hired me as your finance officer.
Allison, have you looked at this?
I did. I looked at it this afternoon. I had some questions. So I pulled out the city charter and this is what I found. In regard to the positions that are appointed, that city manager, chief finance... In regard to the positions that are appointed, that city manager, chief finance officer, city judge, and city attorney are appointed by the council, and the council shall fix their compensation prior to their hiring. So when I came in, I had asked for a salary, and the council accepted. I also read the discretion of the council. As far as the elections and everything now, I don't know when everyone's terms end, but this is what it says. In Article 8, Section 3 of our city charter, "All persons holding office in the city of Harriman under and by virtue of Chapter 165 Private Acts of 1917, and under any amendment thereof, shall continue to hold office under the present election or appointment until the term of said office shall expire, as fixed by the original acts as amended by this act, meaning the charter. And all ordinances and bylaws of the city of Harriman existing immediately before the passage of this act, not inconsistent therewith, shall be and remain in full force and virtue of legal and subsisting obligations, liabilities, actions, claims, contracts, and prosecutions arising under said act shall remain and continue as if this act had not been passed." So I think that means if the city judge was elected and the city attorney was elected at one time, they would continue that until vacancy occurs. And like Councilman Best said, my position came out because the fire person resigned, and so then it could be appointed instead of electing it, because this was in effect May of 2014. As far as, I don't know if the city had a chief finance officer before, if that was elected, then that should probably remain until the next election. And then after that, he wouldn't be elected, he'd be appointed by the council. And the salary could be asked or negotiated at that time.
So what I'm hearing you say is, it would be okay to go ahead and approve your appointment, but that the judge and the city treasurer need to be appointed at the end of their current term?
I think so. With a vacancy, which there were... There's different things in the charter regarding vacancies. One of them, the positions referenced in this resolution are done by the city council. Anything else, the city manager would appoint or fill a vacancy. So I'm not sure if that has to be open to the public to put in resumes and apply for it like I did. That's something, however, the city has to process. But I think that at least with the city judge and given, you know, he should be given the option if he wants to be appointed, or if he would rather not, you know?
It's my understanding that the charter change made it... The city manager could present individuals for these particular offices. Then the council had to approve their appointment. In other words, it's an advise and consent type of operation.
Well, the charter's specific. The city manager can recommend people for positions and hire people upon the majority of the council. However, it kind of excludes, with the exception of the city chief financial officer, city attorney, and city judge, those are done by the council. The manager doesn't necessarily command, and so I picked out this person for you to approve.
Those jobs are not reports to the city manager.
Yeah, let's report directly to this board.
So that wouldn't be fair to ask him to pick them.
I think the charter's clear, because the charter says I do report to, I mean, the city council and the city manager supervises me, which is fine, but as far as like a vacancy, the city manager doesn't fill our positions. He can't terminate us if the city council terminates chief financial officer, city attorney, city judge, or another council member.
And Allison, why would you like to, ground zero, to put somebody in office?
Well, I think because we're kind of in limbo, like somebody said, we've got the... Half of us are on the old charter and elections, and some of us aren't. Like my position, I'm on the new charter because the vacancy happened, and after this was already approved, which says city attorney's appointed, so he wouldn't have me run for election. And I think we got an answer from M. Task at the time. The city manager had asked, and M. Task said, because this was passed, and the position had changed a bit, mine was appointed, so I don't have to run for election. The other ones are still sitting in election unless somebody resigns or is removed.
Now, the treasurer won't go on an election again, neither will the judge or the attorney.
Treasurer won't. I guess chief finance officer is now appointed. I don't know what was before.
That's just a creative job. The treasurer, the attorney, and I think we have to reappoint you. We'll have to double check that. I think you're just fulfilling the term of city attorney.
I'm indefinite. The attorney is appointed, actually, the city judge, city attorney are appointed for indefinite terms at the will of the council.
Yeah, but I think we appointed you to fill, you're still in the old charter. We'll have to check.
We appointed her to fill Harriman's position. Position.
Which expires September 1st, which at best, I thought we would do this, and I thought you would have to make it effective September 1st for the judge and...
I want to say, with regard to your question earlier, there was a lot of legal analysis. Let's follow what you're exactly what you were asking. That was a question better answered by the attorney than me. Now, as far as the structure of the position and responsibilities, I have no issue with that whatsoever. I think it's probably in line with most cities do regarding who handles what responsibilities. As far as Dr. Curley, I think he does an excellent job at this position. I have an issue continuing to work with him. I think it would be seamless for the city and very efficient, and as a result, probably in the best interests of the city and the citizens. Don't work that closely with the city judge, so certainly don't have any issues to report to you as far as what he has done. But then again, I don't have that much interaction with him, so my knowledge there is extremely limited.
And like I said, I think Charles did a great job. We'd come back and say, "Resign." If I kept, if I could say, "We couldn't do it, now we're gonna do it."
I know when I first read it, I had a question whether it would take effect immediately or whether you were passing it tonight to take a bite down with the...
I think you're gonna throw some things in limbo, primarily revenue forecasting, cash flow analysis. A lot of things have to start next month. And since that falls under chief financial officer in the coming year, you're in a period here, that's why we delayed it till now. We're in a period here when this has to pick up and start.
I understand that, but I want to make sure we do it for a while, and then we'll make sure we vote on something.
The only other question I had, and Allison will probably have to answer this, but when it says appointment until such time as a vacancy occurs, because I read the charter, at any point in time, the council would have the right to remove one of these individuals from the position. Is that in conflict with, is that statement in conflict with that? Or is it defining a vacancy as referenced in the charter, that the council could remove someone, and that creates a vacancy?
I don't know how to say it. I think that phrase, until such time as a vacancy occurs, is a little restrictive, because a vacancy can occur by voluntary resigning or if they're terminated, and we could make it like to be appointed chief financial officer for an indeterminate time, which is having, the charter states it, for each of these positions is an indeterminate appointment until something happens where I don't want it, or the council feels I shouldn't be here, and same for the other positions.
Well, it's subject to city charter provisions.
That's what I wondered if... I think what you're saying is fine, but looking at it from a different angle and say whether or not you say until such time as a vacancy occurs has provided for within the city charter.
Yeah.
Now, without you said, do you, Kevin, want to move forward with this? From our attorney's perspective?
Well, I think it's probably piecemeal. We don't have a chief financial officer or an equal, we can certainly make that appointment. And if it doesn't affect the elected treasurer, that'd be fine. The city judge is elected and has a term through the end of August, is that correct?
But he won't be elected again, he'll be hired. I'm going...
Right, but we can't make his appointment be effective now, because this says...
No, it has to be...
Take effect immediately on passage, and so this would have to be redacted, if they were to say, make no resolution as it came up then.
Allison, would it be acceptable to restate this resolution to where it says, "Resolution take effect upon the..." When a vacancy occurs or upon the finish of their term? Not that that's what I'm suggesting, because, you know, I think the intention of this resolution is uninterrupted continuity for the position which serves the city.
I think so, but if we're passing something kind of preemptively to say, "We're gonna appoint Master Crass and Dr. Curley before vacancy even occurs," you're kind of like putting him in a first-place position without that position being open. You're kind of just putting that favoritism out there. And I know we want the seamless transition. I just have an issue kind of saying, "Well, we'll pass this to appoint them when a vacancy occurs," because then that's not fair to other applicants, if you're already saying, "Well, we pass a resolution to appoint these people," because there would be a vacancy September 1st, and so I don't know if the city has to open that up to applications, which, I mean, these people certainly are qualified to do it, but there are other procedures that have to be followed. Instead of say, "Well, when a vacancy occurs..."
We know when the vacancy's gonna occur, so wouldn't we want to do it prior to September? We know it's gonna be a vacancy September 1st, obviously.
I think there might be a hiring procedure that has to be followed, though. That's what I'm trying to get at.
The position of treasurer will forever be gone on September 1st. That's one point you're trying to make.
Yeah. Well, that's true, and the... You know, you have hired me as a chief financial officer and reported that to the state. What, this is basically saying you're gonna call me chief financial officer?
I mean, if we know the vacancy's gonna occur, you could probably open it up for application two months before it comes open, just to have that proper procedure for applicants and review and... And then make the appointment.
By the way, Charles Crass does want to continue. He expressed that to me when I mentioned that a possible resolution would be made.
Well, I don't think he'd want to wait till after election and not have somebody in place. That'd kind of be stupid.
For the financial officer end of it, we need to decide rather quickly who's gonna be the financial officer if we want to have a budget done at a timely matter. Whether we want to lay all those duties on Kevin. If we do, it's just like last year, we can probably expect him to do nothing except budget for three months. Or if we want to have a budget officer or a financial officer to help him, we have to do that. The question is, that's what we have to consider. So something's gonna have to be done pretty quick.
I guess I'm still having a hard time figuring out what the problem with this is, because when I read the resolution under the section for Charles Curley and under the section for Charles Crass, it says until such time as vacancy occurs. As the mayor stated, we know when the vacancy is occurring. It's occurring at the end of their elected cycle. So why would we not put them in that appointed position? It still allows for people to apply for the position. There's no way, there's no reason that we can't accept applications under appointment of the people that we're appointing. To me, it just seems like we're fulfilling the requirement of the charter, which is to have appointed people in the position. I mean, I think the part of the resolution, again, where it says until such time as vacancy occurs, we're not making, we're not going against anything that's in the charter.
Well, I think they're elected until September 1st or August 31st, and then there's the vacancy after that. And so to call them appointed or elected, they're still, hold their position through the end of August. It's just a wording thing in the charter, saying they're elected until their term expires, and so it's kind of where we are.
Our personnel policy. I mean, in these appointments, are we not gonna look at the applicants we're just gonna appoint? Does our guidelines say we have to take applications for positions?
I didn't look at the personnel policy today in reference with this, but I think it is my understanding, we need to put that out there and have applicants. Even if it's the same people, we can certainly just have them go through the process, so that way, you know, there's no question as to the legality of it or nepotism or anything like that.
And I want to make that clear. My intentions was not towards you, Charles, or to punish you. It was to make sure that they couldn't come back and say, "You're in a seat, you shouldn't be in your elected position." You know, that's what I want to make sure. That we do what's right here, and we don't have to go back and reverse, or go back and start over.
Well, you'll have to figure out how to do next year's preparations for budgets and finance activities, so... So your budget officer goes through the current period in completing the FY16 budget, and that is doing all the things necessary to monitor it, to put it in the journal entries, and to basically close it out at the end of the year with the amendments we have to do and all that. So I think you got an issue here. I mean, if I'm not the budget officer for the coming year, I won't be doing budget, that budget preparation activity, because it's necessary to set up the new budget in the journal and do the revenue forecasting, do all the things that's necessary to put in place and manage a new budget, which will have a new debt service fund, it'll have, you know, different line items. That's a good question there of what, you're in a limbo. That's why we delayed this till now. But I think it's time, if we're gonna start working on forecasting, cash flow analysis, all the things that we do prior to completing a budget for next year, we need to at least resolve this issue.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that we have to advertise with the chief financial officer position?
I mean, as an appointed position of the salary position in the city, I think you can refer to the personnel policy for how you advertise opening positions.
Well, that's not what we discussed during the deliberations for the new charter, because at that time, we basically said that these positions will continue until you leave them. That was the intent.
Let me throw this out. You state that you're already appointed as the chief financial officer.
Yeah.
So in effect, what we're doing is we're changing our title to chief financial officer.
That's it.
You are elected until, what, August or September?
For treasurer till September 1st.
September 1st. Why, is there anything that would keep you from holding, I don't think there is, because you're doing that now, holding the appointed position of chief financial officer and the elected position of treasurer until the end of that term? Is there any reason why that won't work?
Well, chief financial, the finance officer's job is already completed for the...
We're doing that now. I do accounting.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You're already doing the job.
Yeah.
You've already been appointed. You've already been appointed to that position, but you were elected as a treasurer.
Yeah.
So is there anything, I don't see any, any conflict there with you continuing in that position and just changing the title of the position from financial officer to chief financial officer.
Well, it consolidates the various activities I'm doing now, under chief financial officer.
I understand that.
And when we get into budgeting, then we will revise how the budget is listed for the coming year with respect to those activities. Right now, we have three line items, three budget activities, so you're right, you're absolutely right.
You see anything wrong with that?
Well, surely, we're not the first town that ever changes government.
But if, if the primary issue is the mechanism outlined in the personnel policy, and I can't recall all of the details off the top of my head, but there are a couple of different processes that are outlined, one of which is for filling a new position, which, if, if it's the opinion that these positions fall under the personnel policy, then for a new position, advertisement and applications are required, there's a different process in place for promoting or transferring employees among positions. I don't know exactly whether or not, in one respect, they like a position as an employee of the city, or they, is it fully an employee of the city like, like all the other employees? I'm not sure, but if it is, if that's an employee of the city, I would, and it's subject to personnel policy, I would see it being more under the process of a transfer or promotion as opposed to a vacant, new hire position. You're taking an employee that's already employed by the city and putting them into a different position.
If we, now, I know we've been a month and a second, if we had our city attorney, our city manager, and our city treasurer get together before our next council meeting and come up with a way that can make this work, and it be the right way, would that, I mean, we're only two weeks, two and a half weeks away, will that affect us, will that affect us much longer?
I think maybe it's, it's not necessary, but you can do whatever you want to do. I think what Ken is saying, you're just changing the title to chief financial officer, because I'm already a financial officer.
But you're changing the elected official name. You are elected official, we're changing, we don't have the power to change elected officials' names, I don't think, I wouldn't think we did.
No, I am your financial officer, no.
But you're elected city treasurer.
But I am your financial officer.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't really mind where you go with this, but I'm saying you're going to impede the process of getting next year's finance and budgeting activities on, on track with what we normally do.
And I understand.
If that's what you want to do, we'll, we'll be doing a budget in next September.
It's not what I want to do, I want to go off the recommendation of an attorney that we hired as our city attorney. She is our legal person in this. She says it's something we don't need to do until we fix it. I think it's what we need to do, it's what we hired her for.
Well, I don't know, have you, have you said that?
It's the fact that this is, these are executive positions rather than employee positions.
Well, the charter calls us, you know, city officers, and I guess I'm having a hard time understanding, you know, offhand, the city treasurer, I guess, is going to go away, and we're changing finance officer, chief finance officer, you know, I guess there's a lot of interpretation. Is it actually a new position, and there's a lot of responsibility in here for the chief finance officer, which is probably what a lot of the treasurer does anyway. But the, the charter says if you're elected, you hold out until the end of your term before, before it changes, and so the city judge can't be appointed until that term ends, and then he can be appointed if he wants the position, fine.
You can't make the city judge the appointment.
Not now, because there's not a vacancy, he's still there. And if he wants to do it in September, you know, that's fine, and I'd have to look at how the personnel policy is worked, and the manager makes an appointment, is it a transfer or is it a whole new position? The city judge is the same position, so probably not a transfer. This chief financial officer, we haven't had before, maybe, is it a title change, depending how much is going on? I don't know. It's hard to say, I don't know the impacts of the budget, or I don't know if it's possible. I mean, we know in September, there has to be a change at the latest for this, I don't know why it can't be planned for that way.
Not for, not for the finance officer, though, we'd have to do something. We, we either have, we either have to tell Charles to do the budget and finance, or we need to go put that out for applications immediately.
I don't know, and I don't know what the salary is.
Or put it on Kevin.
Because, I mean, because you're making these appointments for an indeterminate period at the will of the council, and salary is determined by the council and with the party being appointed, and so you're going to make an appointment without knowing what the salary is, or negotiating that, and that's one of those budget things, too. The same for the judge, it might, it might change for the judge, I don't know.
Can we make, can we promote somebody in, in a position at any time? Do we have to wait for a specific time to promote somebody?
I'd have to look at the personnel policy, how it defines promotion, and if that is.
Okay. So what you're telling me is, we're going to have to wait until you get a chance to study it?
I can look at it some more.
Kevin, can you, can you and Charles also talk to M. Task and some of those groups that, because, I mean, we, we can't be the only town that changed its form of government for that.
I would recommend we, we promote Charles to chief financial officer. He's already holding a job as financial officer.
I don't disagree, but there's a motion in the second argument on the floor for this resolution. Still under discussion.
Well, I mean, what are we going to do to get the questions answered?
That's exactly, if this, if this passes, then, if it fails, then we'll have a special call meeting on the 16th.
At all.
After a workshop.
If we're going to look at it, why would we want to even vote on the motion?
Because we have to, we have to vote, there's a motion in the second, we have to vote.
You can withdraw them, unless it's withdrawn, but nobody's withdrawn.
If I may, the other thing that, as we saw, I mean, if we're in front of chief finance officer, if you want to, you're also paying the city treasurer to the end of his term, and I don't know if he's compensated as the finance officer and changing his title, that does technically come with the salary or whatever the council's going to approve for that position, and so I don't know if that's going to change anything, or because I mean, the city treasurer's going away, and so that'd be money.
About for promoting or closing, no additional remuneration?
I mean, I'm not saying to, to not compensate him, but to stop title, it should certainly be compensated, but that's something that's negotiated with the council when it's appointed, and on taking him to the treasurer, it's going to have money, I mean, what's going to happen with that out there unless it's any of these things where it's going to be moved over to the chief finance officer, I don't know.
See, you did yourself, who was, but the rules have to be looked at, see what the salary, maybe, and that can be put in, in the resolution. Rules go with the salaries, this is what they will do.
Good.
Yeah. And the city attorney's salary, is what?
Mine's in my, we signed, I guess we called it a contract employment agreement for mine, because it was increased from what Harold was being paid as city attorney, and the mine increased, when I was appointed at eight hundred a month is what it said.
Earned it tonight, George. Earned it tonight.
I am tonight, yeah. Because the city, it hadn't been increased in some thirty-plus years, and then the council had agreed, you know, what I was asking, it's still cheaper than paying somebody by the hour to, to do everything that the city attorney needs to do. And so the city attorney's salary is taken care of along the time in this position, but the CFO is a new one to be considered. The city judge technically can do it upon his appointment, the salary determined with the council, and so I don't know if Judge Crass wants anything different, or if he's okay with the same, that's putting him in the council. And I guess the city manager has, you know, his contract worked out and everything for what he, his needs are. But the CFO thing is kind of a nuance with the treasurer going away, but, you know, changing the title and some responsibilities.
Looks like Ellen got your work cut out for you.
In, in light of the need for further discussion on this topic, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
You can only withdraw if, if the second withdraws is, is in agreement. Kevin, can you and Allison bring us some definite answers on this position next Tuesday? A recommendation on how we need to move forward. We'll do a special call meeting then, next Tuesday, after our workshop is at six o'clock, and following that, we'll have a special call meeting, and we'll vote on this, but one way or another, we have to.
It could be, we say, you, the city judge is appointed effective the end of his term.
It, it could, I think part of that's the determination of it, it has to be like a, a public announcement thing, have the public put in an address, I don't know.
Take a look at it, I don't think.
I'm not so much worried about the judge as I am our budget. Don't forget about Gov. Deal's auction, March 7th through the 13th, surplus vehicles from the police department will be on there, and is there anything else from the city going to be on that?
I'll forget Mr. Hands, and we'll look at some items in the basement, moving that coordinating off, they'll probably do them in lots, they'll probably have those, we'll have a complete list on cityharriman.net and harrimanpolice.com probably next week.
Okay. Don't forget about the chili cook-off, which is February 27th, end of this month, community center. Don't forget to shop local, shop Harriman, shop Roanoke Candy, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.